And that's our next efforts that we've got to get into is, is where we do have the water shares available now for future use, we do have to get into a mode and a mindset of how do we manage that? And the management efforts are going to take place in a multi-partnership with Grand County and Moab, as well as other water users in the area who have a vested first right of the water shares in the area. And so it's important that we develop this water management plan so that, one, that we're, we're able to make sure that the water replenishment to the aquifer systems, that it's taken place, it's taken place in a subsistence manner to where you're not getting so much growth, so much development in the area that you can't sustain the replenishment of those aquifers in the system. Now, there are other springs that lead to the area that the county has access, available shares to. However, you do have to develop this water management plan that kind of looks at the future capacities and kind of just established, for me, it's more on the conservation side of it is how do we implement the measures upfront now to where we're, we're doing, we're taking a conservative approach in our development, but also that we're putting in the measures in place in our zoning and in our development to where as developers, developers come online, that everything is already spelled out in a conservation mode, that, for example, lawn areas or landscaping areas, that you don't have these huge amounts of lawn that takes a considerable amount of watering without a secondary water source to water those. We've got to make sure that our parking lots have proper drainage and retention basins so that we can hold the water there as long as we can, trying to mitigate the evaporation effects that come along with development. When, when you look at rooftops, and to me, it's getting into a flavor where you have, you know, the white rooftop, so you're not all-black asphalt roof, so you kind of create this cooling effect with that system. And then also through those efforts, this water management plan kind of gets into all of that, and it spells it out, not only just for San Juan County, but also with Grand County and Moab. What are their efforts? And in Moab, my understanding is they're starting a study now, and I'm, I'll be taking, play part with, in a meeting with them, and trying to get this ball rolling to where we have this water management plan going. And this is where I see Dave's help and his assistance could be greatly appreciated. The, the more that I have people that understand the technical aspects of drainage and aquifers and replenishment, hydrology, even though we do have our state and federal partners who are willing to assist, it'd be, it'd be nice to have somebody there who can translate it back into English so that I can understand it, or the special service district can better have a grasp of that. And, and to me, I think that he, he's the one that adds the strength, that would add the strength to the special service district in there. And so that's why you see my, my motion today, my recommendation is, is appointing Frank Darcy, Lloyd Wilson, and David Ficardi. That does leave May and Mike Bynum out of that list for the special service district. I did speak to Monae, and one of the things that we had advertised for in December as well is for assistance from the public, especially in the Spanish Valley Special Service District, or not special service, but in the Spanish Valley area, for assistance with the local homeless coordinating committee. We didn't receive anybody, any volunteers for that at all. We need help in that, and she just did some conversations that I've had with her. She's got some pretty specific ties with nonprofit organizations who have dealt with homeless and mental health issues there in Moab, and so she's got a lot of connections that I'm hoping that I can use her help with on that, that committee itself. And so, to me, it's not like she will not be underused here in the county. We'd like to, to put her to work and bring back on the next commission meeting, that appointment to that committee. That committee, as you remember, you passed the ordinance last year for that local homeless coordinating committee. We've been meeting very routinely on there. It's been more of a hit and miss. Once COVID hit, we, we kind of fell off the wayside as vaccination became more important. But each week, both Ann and I are in a meeting with the state who tracks local homelessness, and we continue to, to do our public count of homeless throughout San Juan County, and we feel that, I feel that Monae would be able to, to help with that. We need members of the public that aren't necessarily affiliated with a government organization who can take things and, and run with it and help make the connections with that committee. And so, other than that, commissioners, do you have any questions for me regarding that and the recommendation?
So there's five board members.
So there's five coordinators, correct?
Three of them.
Three are up now. And then, so in two years, you'll, you'll be going through the same process again for the other two members that exist.
How, gentleman, one of the gentleman or the chair or somebody mentioned, the lawsuit that was pertaining to $750,000. That one is not the fault of the board?
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't a whole lawsuit. It was, it was arbitration to avoid a lawsuit and having to pay attorney fees. We sat down, Lloyd was a member, we had our attorney, and then you had, we had an attorney specifically signed from USIP to the special service district that represented the special service district in this arbitration role. And so we met with the contractor and county and the special service district all set down at the table, and came to an arbitrary amount of damages that the contractor felt, that they were entitled to originally. I can't remember if you, if you remember, some of the discussions that we had with that. They had originally come back over a million dollars as initial request. We were able to, to go down, and, and a lot of it was to the credit of Lloyd, and just the institutional knowledge that he has, the knowledge also that he has as a contractor. He, he was able to go back and say, okay, wait, you know, as a contractor, you shouldn't only, you should only be requesting this amount for this. With the project, he had that institutional knowledge of the project, saying, hey, wait, you didn't do this and this. And so we were able to, through that negotiation, come down to the settlement of about $750,000. But it was literally based off of some change orders and some emails that went back and forth that kind of like was mentioned. It was no fault of the special service district at all.
Well, if it wasn't, if it wasn't the fault of the board, then it was stated that it was the fault of the engineer.
Engineer and project management. The county is, is part of that as well. I, you know, I wasn't here at the time, but I, you know, there was, there was a lot of mix-ups that happened.
So that, what I'm looking at is, if it's the engineers that was at fault, then the suit should have been pointed at that.
Because some of the terms, yeah, some of the terms and language in their contract.
Unless the contract does say otherwise.
It does. And so, and, and to, to the engineer's credit, they also paid an amount of that settlement as well.
So, I don't know if he was general of knowledge until we started talking about the appointment.
So, it's always hard in, in public meetings, because if you're not paying attention, you miss it. If you remember, we brought back the participation agreement to the county commissioners. And so you were aware of the $750,000 settlement, because we, the county paid that money in behalf of the special service district, and we entered in an agreement with the special service district that they would pay it back. The special service district also met in their meetings and discussed these very things. They also discussed the project as well. And so in their meetings, they discuss everything that's going on with the project, new connections, water rates, how many people are paying, you know, their bills, people that aren't paying their bills, who's connected, who's not, who needs to be. And so it's a matter of paying attention. Had, had individuals been going to the special service district meetings, they would have heard this.
The other concern is that since it was on behalf of the board, the county pays $750,000. Now, what is the attorney that the special service district, or how are they going to pay? Are they going to pay in increment or lump sum?
Yeah, so increment, we set it up for increment, but we also went through and asked for additional funding for, we treated, we treated the, the arbitration from that case as a change order. And so we approached the Division of Drinking Water for the change order to cover that, because technically, that's what it was. It was a change order that was, that was disputed. And so that's, that's where posing on the bonds and everything coming to play, is we received additional funds from the Division of Drinking Water to help cover the other portions of those funds. And so you'll see a payment back from the special service district regarding that change order that we covered. And then, if you remember, SITLA, every year also pays for their portion of the infrastructure and the water for this project. And so they, every year, they make a payment to the special service district, and the special service district can use those funds to pay us back as well. So two, two different sources.
So, so the deficiency of the, the loss of funding of $750,000, so the county pays that funding back?
Yeah.
Now, now, who is the county going to turn to? Are we going to hike up the, the water and the sewer costs or upstairs, Spanish Valley?
So, the, the special service district does have to reimburse the county for those funds, yes. And the special service district did raise rates as well to cover the loan costs. And so the special service district doesn't have to come up with all of the funds. And if you remember, I, part of this project was received in a grant from the CIB, and then you also had a Division of Drinking Water loan on here. And so the proceeds or the loan will be paid back from the revenue that's created from the water users. Now, now, this is also important to, to remember is not all of the, not all of the individuals are connected to this water system. You have, and just to be clear, you've got David, who's an applicant on here, he, he's not connected to the water system, neither is Monae. They're not connected to the water system. And so part of this, to get revenue, you've got to have users that are tied in to the water system that's drawing water so that you can charge them a fee for the water utilization. And part of that water management plan is to get more of those users off of the well water, connected to the county's sewer system. When you talk about water replenishment, you still have a lot of users there that are tied on to a septic system that's feeding back into the aquifer, yet you have a public system there that's paid for and will be paid and reimbursed by individual users. It's important for us to be reaching out to those people in the area that will start paying back in and be connected to the sewer system so that they can help pay for these loans. And so that's the next step, is, you know, you look at these water users, making sure that they are no longer using the water.
I can, I can understand the loan and all those, but the $750,000, somebody stumbled and, and poured coffee on their feet. So my question is, who's paying for that? Because right now, are we going to go after the residents there because of somebody's mess up? Is that what we're going to do? If it turns a loan, then yes, because if the county paid for that, what happens if it's going to hide it there? We're going to be going after somebody else's money. Are we going to do it as a county?
That's up to you, commissioners, if you go after other people's money. The system is set up that, and this is no different than any water project, if you exceed the amount of money that you have available, the only people that can pay for that are those users on that system. The county, we, we have paid upfront to make sure that the, the project continued, that we can have project close out, and then we rely on the special service district and those users to pay for the proceeds of the loan, as well as the additional loan. Now, during that process, when they, they did have to increase the rates there to cover the loan amounts, that was something that had to be done before we could even take out the loans. We did have a public hearing to discuss the increase in the water rates, and I think we had two comments that came out from that public hearing. Outside of that, we didn't receive a lot of comments or negative comments from those users within the, or potential users within that special service district. And as a reminder, the project still isn't completed yet. We're still, we're still working to finalize the last pieces of this contract.
So the, your recommendation is to go with the two that's on board, replace one of them with, with Dave?
Dave Ficardi.
Ficardi, I must say, Ficardi. And the two others?
They would still exist. They're still, their terms have not expired yet.
I mean, the other, there's five of them. One, one is to use Dave as a replacement. So there's, there'll be three active. Two of them still need to be replaced.
In two years.
In two years, those will come up. So every two years, we get to go through this cycle of replacing members or renewing terms, and so.
Don't replace them all at once. Part every two years, alternate.
So to me, my recommendation is to appoint, so reappoint Frank and Lloyd, who are existing members.
Lloyd is the water operator.
He's the water operator, yeah. And then to add a new member, David Ficardi, who would then replace Mike Bynum on that board.
The other two?
The other two continue to serve their terms out for their remaining two years.
Oh, okay. There's only one, one addition that's righted.
So there were, so on the board, and typically with our special service districts, no different than commissions, is your staggered terms. So you two, you and Kenneth are up for reelection in two years, whereas Commissioner Adams was up for election this year. So you stagger every two years, same with the special service district. And so on the special service district, you had Frank, Lloyd, and Mike Bynum, all saying that they want to continue to serve. And they've served since, oh, 2006 is Frank's, 2012 is Lloyd, and Mike's been there since 2016. And so they have all said, hey, we want to run again. We want to continue to, to be on the special service district. My recommendation is to keep Frank and Lloyd there, so renew them, keep them in on the board, but replace Mike Bynum with David Ficardi.
Okay. The other question, the other concern that I have is rate increase on water and sewer, but that's already been agreed to?
It's been agreed, and, and you don't get to make that decision.
Why? They're not telling us.
Yeah, there's, well, the special service district, you, by law, they, they have the rights to make, to make their decisions as a special service district, and they have. And they go through the same, same process that we had too when we did our tax increase. You have to go through the public process, have a public hearing, and explain why, and get everybody's information. The board makes that public decision, and which they did, they chose to increase rates. And, and if you remember back in your policy, it's kind of county policy, that the commissioners let the special service districts operate on their own. But no matter what, the county is always still, the bottom line, if they go belly up, you're responsible for them.
Send them back over.
Yes, and you'll see that, and we'll have, we're going to be having discussions.
If we have the resources.
It will, and even if you don't have the resources, it comes right back to, there's some issues and concerns that we have with Mexican Hat, and they're an operate, they're a water operating district as well. And there's some, there's some issues that we have there with board members, as well as, we test future sustainability, and all of that comes back to us. But they make their decisions on their own as special service districts. That's what they do.
So, made a motion, Mr. Adams?
I make a motion to appoint Frank Darcy, Lloyd Wilson, and Dave Ficardi to the Spanish Valley Special Service District.
Do that here in a second. My understanding is they, they had already discussed the poss, not possible, but rate increase for the water and sewer. So that's understood. Cannot use that as an excuse not to do other things other than appoint new members. And, and Dave Ficardi is a geologist?
Hydrologist.
Hydrologist, geologist, knows about natural resource. The other, what's his name? I almost said, yeah.
Frank?
Frank is the chair.
Frank Darcy is the chair.
The other.
Lloyd Wilson?
Lloyd Wilson is water, water operator, also as a board member. So he's the one that collects the dinero, puts it in the bank.
And you have a treasurer also on the board. So the treasurer is the one that actually, so the chair and the treasurer are the only ones that handle the funds. And so separate from the water operator, they, they make sure that that's done in that manner.
Okay. So I think it's a safe matter to appoint new, new, one new individual. And we tip the four until two more years, two more will, two more terms will come up. Mr. Adams?
If you want to avoid what we're doing today, for all of this time, by the time the next appointment in two years comes up, we have the ability as a commission to change this board to an elective position of the residents that live in the area if we want to. We could do that two years down the road.
Get it out of our hands. That's what I've been, I've been saying. It's a very application for township.
Yes, and submitted an advocacy work.
We probably have to go ahead, we have to go ahead and appoint today, but do that in two years.
You understand, Mr. Maryboy?
Yeah, but I don't agree with you guys.
Well, there's no other way, unless you wanted to go with, no appointment? Okay. Go ahead. Holders in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye also? Oppose? Abstain? Do in favor, one opposed? My recommendation is to appoint Dave Ficardi.
And Frank Darcy and then Lloyd Wilson?
Yes.
All right, and then I'll, I'll check. Can I open it? Do you have?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to float the idea out there, if the chair would, would let me. If you, if you want my office to start working on an ordinance that would make that board, that would change the rules so that board is elected the next go-round, just let me know, and my office would be more than happy to get started on that. So we're not, we're not up against a clock in two years. We have plenty of time to do it. If we start now, I'll, I'll leave that up to the commission to. But I'll leave that up to the Commission to decide if they want to do that. Just let me know.
Well? You wanna recall the motion?
No, you keep the directive. You keep the motion, but it's just, it's something.
Forward, Commissioner, Commissioner Gais, it would be for the next round. This motion is done, but it would be, if you want me to start working on something to change it, I would be more than happy to start working on something.
I've made a recommendation to that.
For the next, for the next time this board, the board positions come up, we don't have to go through the same rigmarole.
Bueno. Ewa. Good. That sounds the same.
I'll work with Kendall on that. Thanks, Kendall, I appreciate that.
Okay, last twenty-four.
Number twenty-four resolution. The San Juan County Board of Commissioners supporting the findings and recommendation of the May at the Anbani Navajo Road Emergence, the Navajo Nation White Paper 2021, Commissioner Maryboy.
Mr. Maryboy?
Thank you. This particular resolution is not only before us, it's only before the Pacheco County, Openino, and every other department on the Navajo Nation. What this resolution is doing is going to the federal and cutting a lot of the red tape that's already bundled up on the Navajo Nation. There's roads and other programs that are, the existing, the existing bylaws that's already been set by the federal code. It's gotten so bad that where, nobody can't do anything. So, this resolution before us is the one that's gonna be asking the federal government to repeal a lot of those guidelines, to renegotiate. And Navajo each commission is passing it, and Mexican Water Chamber passing it, and other chapters are passing it across the Navajo Nation. And it's before us as a county to recognize that we are also acknowledging that the, that a lot of renegotiation on the federal guidelines on the reservation for the roads should be reconsidered. And that is what this resolution is for.
Okay. So, I was asked by Mr. Madam, who do we address this resolution to? And it needs to be directed
Rehearing.
To the President, to Navajo Nation, INDOT, and also BIA, Department of Transportation. And if possible, I can sign it and will give it to Secretary in a couple days. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Cherry, if I may?
Yes.
This resolution will be headed to the, to the federal BIA. And the courtesy coffee will be made for the Navajo Nation, and also for the Standing Committee on the Resources and Development Committee, and also the INDOT.
Okay. That's what you said, right?
I just sent him that one. Ewa, okay. Any further comment? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, aye also. Okay. Continue to the action item.
Thank you.
Commission report.
Willie would like to make, I just got a text from the BLM. And they asked me to pass this along to you. At three thirty Thursday afternoon, Secretary Holland wants to meet with the elected officials in the county at Edge of the Cedars in Blanning.
Three thirty?
Three thirty to four fifteen at Edge of the Cedars.
Okay.
Hear that, Kenneth?
Yeah, three thirty to four thirty at Edge of the Cedars?
Three thirty to four fifteen at Edge of the Cedars for local government leaders meeting.
That's out here in the meantime.
You can tell them that I didn't schedule it.
Repeat that? Yeah, we've been waiting, so, yeah.
We're still in.
They just asked me to pass that along to you and Willie.
All right, bye.
Thursday, yeah. I need to hang around till tomorrow.
Easy to go home.
Yeah.
How was that?
We're almost done. You have any, well, you got the information from Mr. Adams. Three thirty PM, five fifteen.
Four fifteen.
So, just less than an hour, so forty-five minutes?
Forty-five minutes. That gives you five minutes, and Kenneth five minutes, and me a half hour.
Okay, that's fine.
No.
I'll tell, I got a written, I'll make it about five minutes for me. Read it.
Yeah, five minutes, three minutes.
Anyway, that's what I wanted to, the Edge of the Cedar?
Yeah.
Okay. The other one that I'm wrestling with is the April twenty-ninth. Seven county infrastructure people will be down there.
Okay.
On Navarona. And they have the chief executive director, board members, the engineer, and also invited Phil Davis, Davis, Phil.
Excuse me.
And Woody Lee. Hopefully, they, they should be there, they can, they'll show up.
At the chapter?
They wanna, by noon, they'll be at the chapter.
What time?
We'll have lunch, and then we will go ahead and take a caravan, I guess, to Payute Mesa.
What time, start?
At twelve noon will be.
Start at twelve?
Right.
Okay.
If you can come in eleven thirty, fine. And we'll go across the canyon and to the edge, what is it? On the east tip of Payute Mesa, look down, see what we need to educate each other. I would say about less than five, six miles of riderway that we need. The rest are already set. Then, what I'm trying to do is also, if the riderway is secured, then we go ahead and put a water delivery system pipeline from San Juan River to the top of Payute Mesa. Probably about three hundred feet elevation. So, that's what I'm trying to do is. What is it, I do?
That's why we're actually alarmed. So, it's like they're calling the fire out.
The rains are coming.
Okay. Ewa, any other comments?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, as made by Mr. Maryboy.
Two fifty-six.
Two fifty-five, two fifty-seven. There's a second, I'll just throw in.
His house is on fire.
And give you a house now.
Second by Mr. Adams. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I don't know why I came to that zone. Yeah, we should have the sound system and everything by the end of April. Everything's, anything coming from China right now just isn't happening. The computer chips and, like, all the trucks are delayed. Anything computer-related is delayed, the sound equipment's delayed.
Yeah.
And so, we're hoping to get you back in here the first of May meeting.